I got it taken care of right away. Not all of us can be as fortunate as Ernie and Jordan.
Fortunate, okay.
Well, I think we have quorum. Why don't we go ahead and call this meeting to order? And Jeff, why don't you call the roll?
So I will call the roll. I do see a couple of people have their mutes on, so just remember to unmute yourself before, after I call your name. So, Councillor Pete's old. Councillor Smallwood. Councillor Hamblin. Councillor Lee. Councillor Exner.
Excused.
Okay, and Councillor Schultz. And Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Hate to make everybody do this, but considering kind of everything going on in our country right now, let's stand for the pledge. Let's do it. If you're not, if you're only wearing a top, though, don't stand. Yeah, Hamblin, I'm looking at you. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic. One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The most succinct deal we've ever done. So with that, I'll just start off with a couple of words. Obviously, none of us have ever been, nobody alive today has been faced with what our world and our country and our community has been faced with over the last couple of weeks. Just would like to say just how proud I am of our staff and our city leadership. Very unprecedented times. Information is changing literally by the second at some points. There's no, you know, there's no manual on how to face these kinds of crises that we're in the middle of today. And the truth of the matter is, is that a lot of us are leaning on our national state leaders who have the best and brightest in the scientific community that they get their facts and their information from. I've used this line a couple of times, you know, if President Donald Trump and Governor Kate Brown can see eye to eye on how how big of a deal this is, I think we all should probably take notice of that and do our parts. Obviously, the governor, after a lot of debate, and there was, there were a lot of conference calls and stuff, finally came to the decision to do a stay-at-home order this morning. I've sent around a lot of information on what that means. Rather than list out every essential versus non-essential business, she basically just went through and listed the ones that are listed as non-essential and are banned. And I think we have a lot of decisions that we need to make tonight as we test out the system. But just wanted to start with a couple of words, just of how proud I am as, as a community, our staff, how we've reacted to this situation. David Snyder and all the work he's doing to try to hold that main street and a lot of our local businesses during this trying time has been vital, and thank you for his efforts. And Jeff and Jordan and the emails and the creation of the new website. I know our first responders, Laurie or City Council. Nicole. But this has been across all lines that we'll update sometime. Whether it's been transit, library, senior services, there's been I don't know what that background and noise is, but we haven't really get into the agenda. If you could mute your Usually that's what creates the echo. As if you have not muted. Okay, thank you. So a quick review of this, of the agenda, we'll go through our changes to the agenda. We'll have a portion of public comment, which I have no idea how that's going to work. I'll lean on you, Jeff, for that. We'll go to our consent agenda, which is light, just the city council minutes from our last meeting, what seems forever ago. Under new business, we'll get an update on our COVID-19 response. We're going to have a discussion as a council on, along with staff, on possible COVID-19 parks closure and economic, and a possible economic relief fund. And then we'll be going through contracts for engineering services and then discussing a whole harmless agreement for three eight-eight-eight-eight Pioneer Boulevard. Then we'll do our report from city manager, as well as our committee and council reports, which probably a bunch of home-based reports this time around. With that, we will jump into our agenda. First up, is there any changes to the agenda tonight? Remember, you'll need to unmute your, your microphones. Seeing then, and we will move on to public comment. Jeff?
Okay, so we currently have four attendees. So if you are logged into Zoom on your computer, there should be a button at the bottom of your screen that says raise hand if you'd like to speak. So go ahead and click that and wait to be recognized. If you are calling in on your phone and you'd like to raise your hand to speak, you want to hit star nine. And then you can wait to be recognized to speak. So again, if you're online, bottom of your screen, click the raise hand button. Or if you're on your phone, star nine. And we'll just give it a second. So Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand.
Okay, so we'll go on to our consent agenda. I am looking for a motion and a second.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
A second.
Motion by Councillor Pete's old and a second by Councillor Hamblin to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to a bit.
Yes, quick suggestion. We may want to do roll call, just so we make sure to track.
Yeah, yeah, first time. I understand. I was thinking that. Jeff, will you, Jeff, will you call roll?
Sure. Councillor Pete's old. Councillor Smallwood. Councillor Hamblin.
Aye.
Councillor Lee.
Here, oh yes, sorry.
Councillor Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Pulliam.
Aye, thank you. New business, Jordan, I'll let you lead our city COVID-19 response update.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks for bearing with us tonight. This is obviously something new that we're trying out and there will certainly be hiccups and you know, technical difficulties and things like that, but so far, so good. And I appreciate the council being flexible and letting us try this out. And we're not alone, you know, cities across the state, country are trying these new virtual meeting setups. And we'll just continue to get better and learn from this. But so far, I think this is a good way to be able to continue to move forward and have the council meet and conduct business. And really tonight, what we wanted to do is, one, test the software out to see how it works, is we have some public carryings coming up that we want to be able to still have public participation. But two, this is a good chance for the council to hear updates from staff on how we've been responding to the COVID-19 pandemic and answer any questions you have. And then I know there's a couple of items that we have to discuss about future programs and what we're doing with our parks. You can hear that I have a cold, so if I cough or anything, at least hopefully it's a cold. Taking all the precautions and trying to lead by example by working from home, like most of our staff are doing at this point. As you've heard, and we've been keeping you updated, citywide, all our public facilities are closed to the public. We have basically a skeleton crew that are working at the facilities, our central staff. Everyone else, for the most part, are now working from home. Our facilities include, you know, closing the library to the public and the community services, community center, the police station, city hall, the operations center. So we're doing our part in maintaining, you know, social distancing, making sure staff are taking precautions and, you know, washing their hands often and cleaning our facilities. But also, you know, really trying to drive home that we have the tools, we have the technology, we can we can work from home and do it successfully and still provide public service. At the same time, we want the public to know that we're still open for business and we can conduct business through, you know, online services, through the phone. We can schedule drop-offs. We have the Dropbox for utility payments. And so we want to continue, you know, as much as we can, normal business, but recognizing especially with the executive orders that are coming out, that people should be staying home and business should, you know, be slowing in terms of people conducting their business with city hall and with other city services. I do want to echo what the mayor said. I mean, this has been just a really exceptional effort from staff, from the department heads on down. Everyone has really stepped up. It's been just really impressive and truly like shows just what a committed and responsible organization that we have. And I'm really thankful for all their work, you know, the amount of time and how everyone has just sort of stepped up and you know, cooperated and coordinated with each other. So, you know, major applause for staff and, and especially the department heads and you know, this is unprecedented. We're, we've kind of put plans into place in the chance of something like this happens. But it's, it's, it's one of the things that government does is make sure that our citizens are protected, that they're safe, that they get good information. And that, you know, we protect their health as much as possible, working with our, our leaders in this, with the county, the state and the CDC. So what we wanted to do tonight is have the chance for the department heads to share impacts to their services and departments and sort of what they've been focusing on. Just really brief, you know, nothing too long, because we do want to have a chance for question and answers. We have been providing the council updates through email and, and phone calls. So this is also for the benefit of any public watching this, but also a chance for you guys to ask any other questions about, you know, maybe as things continue to change, because as you know, it's basically by the hour that things have been changing this last couple of weeks. So with that, I first want to turn it over to the chief to talk about the police services and what they've been seeing and what he's been doing in connecting with the county EOC.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jordan. Evening, everyone, councillors, mayor, department heads. I hope all of you are doing well. So I'll start off with just a quick, we did close the business offices to the police department last week after I spoke with Jordan about that and with everything else that was going on. So we also are not doing fingerprints for the time being. And in addition to that, we canceled all of our citizen ride-alongs, which is a program that we have, that most of you are probably familiar with, but for obvious reasons, those were canceled. We do have all of those applications and those people will be notified and they can come at a later date when this, when things are different. So we'll keep all those on file to make sure those people get the ride-along that they signed up for. The, starting tomorrow, I will we will begin conference calls with the EOC. And we'll do this every Tuesday and Thursday for a briefing. All city emergency managers will be on this. And this starts tomorrow. Since previous, since last couple of weeks, before this conference call and briefings are happening, I've been up, I've had the, the web EOC up and running, so I've been following what's going on with the county EOC, getting all the statistics and the numbers and forwarding those reports to the city manager, of course. The, today, we did have some calls from businesses that were just for, to my office that were looking for information. So far, we've, haven't had any problems with enforcing any kind of directive that the governors put out. I did get that this morning and I went through that for quite some time, because there were some things in there that a little, little hard to understand for me as far as the business types, and I wanted to be able to answer some of those questions if they came in. So I did go over that this morning. And I do understand what the governor's directive is on enforce, the enforcement situation. They are heavily in favor of education, which I think is a great thing. And I don't foresee, as of now, I think most businesses here will comply. And the ones that don't, we will contact and forward the appropriate reports to the appropriate agency. The as far as the parks situation goes with the, what we're going to be discussing tonight, I think I can wait on that and then weigh in when you guys have questions, if you have any questions for me as far as an enforcement issue, if we do close those. So I think I can wait on that. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Jordan, okay?
Yeah.
Other things that we've been trying to get is we have, we have a bit of a shortage on PPE equipment, which we've ordered some, but that, that is really hard to come by right now. We did have a citizen who donated some masks. Thank you, Mayor, who put in, in touch with those people that were able to do that. So we got some to get by. And I'm also working with the county. They're starting to get supplies coming, but those are going to be distributed by, not necessarily to us first, but we are they, they are aware of the shortages that we have and they're working on it. So those reports are coming in daily and I will keep everyone informed, of course.
Thank you. Any questions for, for the team?
I've got, I've got a quick question. And just kind of, Chief, are you guys going to continue to respond to cardiac arrests right now, if you're short on PPE?
We, as of right now, we are.
Okay.
So there's been some discussions and you know about these, and I didn't bring this up because I, we haven't decided, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stop doing that right now. But at some point, there has been some discussion in the county that some of their, some deputies are not responding to those calls anymore. And they've asked, actually asked us for our help while we are still doing this. So for the time being, we are going to do this. My officers know to, you know, take the necessary precautions and defer to medical services, of course, when they can.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Next, I was going to have Andy Hall talk about transit and what's been going on with their transit services.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Sorry, you're going to get a black screen as I talk, unfortunately. Maybe we can put up Stan's picture instead, because he has that nice, beautiful Sam props behind him. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I'll start with the Ops Center, just touch on it briefly, that we're also, as you know, closed to the public. We do have people in this building. We have drivers and Public Works still showing up every day. So as you can imagine, my ridership is down and any, especially the, the demand response rides went down before our fixed route services. So any driver that has some downtime is going through the building periodically and spraying surfaces, wiping inside, cleaning, and also going out and cleaning any buses that are in the yard. As far as the buses, until today, we've continued to run, or up to today, we've continued to run as scheduled. The drivers are disinfecting inside the bus on touched surfaces at the end of every run. So when they get to the Gresham Transit Center or Estacada or Timberline Lodge, they are closing the buses and wiping down rails, fare boxes, doors. At the end of each shift for the bus, at the end of the night, the buses are brought in for a complete disinfecting of the entire bus until the next morning. I said until, or up to today, because due to ridership and also a staff shortage that we're starting to experience, we have decided that the Sam Fixed Route will operate hourly, starting tomorrow, instead of every half hour. So that is in our schedule, our Saturday service. So Monday through Saturday, beginning tomorrow, Sam Gresham will run hourly. One of the largest changes that we've experienced, and to be honest, ridership has just started to decrease significantly in the past couple of days, but, but started to decrease Thursday or Friday. But one of the, the most significant changes is in demand response. So the rides that go into the greater metro region, Gresham, Portland, et cetera, for medical services really dropped. So we have shifted that driver to cover meals on wheels every day of the week except Thursday. That began today. We've also partnered with Sandy Helping Hands. You might have seen that on our Facebook page or on our webpage that people can order through their ClickList and Sandy Transit will deliver the groceries to those who can't get out and get them. As you may, well, you are aware, we're not charging fares at this time, so we're not charging for any of those services as well. One of the things that I do want to touch on, and I will keep you up to date, is that currently, there's no guarantee that when we shift into these different service modes, the grant funding that we do receive will cover some of those costs. So when you read some of our federal funding requirements, delivery of goods is not in my scope of work. I'm supposed to be delivering people. So we are working to draft a request that'll give us a waiver and basically give us temporary relief to some of those federal requirements. We aren't the only agency that has shifted mode of operation, so I imagine those requirements will be coming in pretty heavy from transit in general. Our, our current agreements with the federal government allows us to use our capital equipment, such as buses, in conditions like this. But what it doesn't cover is the cost of the driver or anything that they consider operations. We have increased, like, like police, like chief, sorry, I'm kind of all over my notes. But like chief, we are ordering extra equipment that is not usually in our budget. We are having a hard time starting to find some, you know, disinfectant spray, wipes, and so forth. We've also ordered some equipment like electrostatic sprayers that work better disinfecting inside of us. But of course, it takes a month for them to get here, so we're expecting them by the end of this month. And then finally, I, we, I am a board member of the Oregon Transit Association. I'm actually the newly elected president. So we have called an emergency meeting for 11:00 AM tomorrow to start talking about what the cost is to transit, what the impact to our financial revenue, especially, we're not bringing in not only will our payroll taxes get hit, but we're not bringing in fares and other sources of income. We're facing some driver shortages. So we're going to look at, look at the cost and hopefully draft a statement to the Joint Special Committee on the Coronavirus Response and see if we can, as, as a state, come together with a message from transit.
Thanks, Andy. Any questions? All right. Next, I was going to have Mike Walker talk a little bit about Public Works and also Violia and their response, what they're working on.
Sorry, Mike, before you head in, just one quick question for Andy is, so what are we seeing from the other transit departments throughout the state as far as, I mean, obviously, it's a very high exposure area getting on these transit buses and with the people-to-person contact and all that. I know we're doing everything we can to sanitize and, and do the proper social distancing, but are we seeing and transit, obviously, is an essential service for a variety of reasons. But are we seeing any Trimed or anyone provide recommendations to start, you know, lowering our, our amount of routes and stuff that we do? And just maybe go down to dial-a-ride or what's the current mood on that right now?
So, thank you for that question, because it is an important question in ways on all of our minds. I know here for Sandy Transit, we have sat down and we have several different service planning scenarios that basically depend on direction we get from public health or, or others, as well as ridership, driver shortages, lots of factors. The main feeling has always been from the beginning that transit is an essential service that can't go away, so we're going to continue to operate. We are starting to see some really large agencies, such as BART in California, drop just some routes, like late evening routes. Mount Hood Express did drop one of their runs and you'll likely see them drop a couple more because of the closure on the mountains, such as Timberline is closed and would prefer the public. They kind of see it as a risk factor, having the public be delivered to them when they're not open. So we may see some rolling back of service, and as you said, we may see that we shift into more of a dial-a-ride demand response type service, where we're maybe even not carrying too many people around and also switching to that goods delivery. We are also, just so you know, we've been alerted both through a phone call and an email that we are on the state emergency transportation plan as a contact for delivery of personnel, goods and services, if called upon.
Thanks, Andy. Mike, I'm going to get the update on Public Works.
Yeah, Violia has been very informative on keeping as abreast of their corporate policies. They've set their shifts at both facilities. And they have a project manager working from home most of the time. So that keeps the social distancing in effect, and they're just going to deal with personnel issues as they happen. They have a couple of projects here in the southwest Washington, Willamette Valley, where they can draw people from. But again, understandably, they'd be reluctant to move people from one project to another unless absolutely necessary. Public Works is, maybe later this week, will start to split shifts. Right now, we have people traveling to job sites in separate vehicles where possible, just to keep that social distancing working. And today would have been the termination day for non-payment of utility bills, but those have been suspended. So I don't know if Tyler has any statistics on how many people were on the list, but we, no, no shutouts took place today. Our will, this is over.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions? Next, Greg.
Sorry, I'm slow, Jordan, and this might be, this might be for you for your, your city manager report. Were you going to provide us an update from your meetings with the EQ?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Greg, how about an update on SandyNet and what we're seeing there?
Yeah, so SandyNet has seen an increase of traffic overall. Mostly during the daytime and working hours is when we've seen the, the large spike. However, after working hours, five to five PM through usually 11:00 PM, we are seeing an increase in traffic, nothing that we can't handle. But we are definitely seeing people push a lot more traffic during the day to various different locations, whether it's VPN protocols, people telecommuting to work, kids not in school playing video games, a lot of Netflix, things like that. We're continuing to get a lot of speed-related calls and people, usually it's issues with people's Wi-Fi. So those are continuing. Seems like there's a lot more, we've actually been having to do a lot more repairs lately, which is starting to conflict with everything else shutting down. We still have to be entering people's homes to fix their internet service when their fiber breaks. And so my team and I are currently trying to put together, you know, we have our precautions for our employees to make sure that they are being as safe as possible. But in terms of relating the expectations of a customer, we're still trying to find a way to voice that. That's a little bit easier than telling everyone on the phone, every phone call and also in person. So we're continuing to make progress on that. But other than that, I mean, things have been continued on with SandyNet. I think we've seen more issues with upstream providers and other content or delivery systems. Like Facebook seems to be having an issue with increased load lately and other various services are having outages. And those do affect our downstream customers, however, they're out of our control. And those do affect our downstream customers, however, they're out of our control.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Just wanted to thank everyone, obviously in every department, but, you know, with, especially with Jeremy on the call, thanking our past leadership for just making SandyNet possible. I mean, imagine what this pandemic would be like without SandyNet and the ability to work from home and for people's children that are home from college. I know that Counselor Petzold talks about this a lot. People's kids were coming home from college and not able to do their homework and they stopped coming home. How important that was for him to get SandyNet in place. And just imagine working from home, entertaining children, it's everything we rely on the internet for. It just would be a completely different experience for our community facing this right now without SandyNet. So, just thanks to your team and I know going into homes and stuff, a lot like what our first responders and everybody sees as well. But, you know, there's a lot of industries right now that were not considered front of the lines of stuff like this that are today. So, thank you guys for keeping everything going. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I want to comment as well, because I'm on, I get called from around the nation to ask about questions, but one of the things that's come up is, we don't see in SandyNet is because we have a fiber system, other places like Comcast, WAVE, others are having a real strain for people working from home for that upload. Because their design, physical design is such that they can't really control that and with our complete fiber system, that, we don't have that constraint. So, like phone calls like this with Zoom meetings and online phone calls, if you can imagine all these people at home now trying to do that and it's not working, this is pretty flawless, I have to say. I've been in a lot of meetings and this is pretty flawless. So, that's great. Like Stan was saying, you know, we're very lucky in this day and age to have a city like what we're doing there. Also, I have to go to work every day because we're essential staff trying to keep internet going for everyone as well as SandyNet. Because without that, the police doesn't get it, don't get internet, the fire station doesn't get internet. You know, not only the home users, but all these medical things. People are doing video conferencing with medical stuff, we aren't getting that. So, you know, I look at, as my staff and I'd say to SandyNet as well and their staff, you know, they're the essential staff, just like police and fire. No offense, Lori and Ernie, but they just don't get shot at or, you know, have to deal with fires. But without them and Public Works, we would shut down as a city, as a community would erupt. So, I just want to hats off to you.
And just to make sure it's clear, our bus drivers, our transit folks, our folks at our library, our folks in our senior services, SandyNet, I mean, it's across all departments right now. I just, you know, SandyNet's kind of unique to our community, which is why I wanted to highlight it. Certainly don't want to diminish just the great stuff everybody's doing right now on the front lines in Sandy.
All right, thanks, Greg. Hey, Kelly, are you equipped to talk or do you want us to come back? Okay. You got a thumbs up. Do you want to give an update on Development Services or do you want me to cover that?
Sure, yeah, I can talk to it. Yeah, I'm getting a cold, which I believe was a cold, so I've been hacking a lot of time getting up from my chair. But I'm kind of on the, I'm feeling a lot better today, actually, than when for a little jog outside just because I was feeling a lot better. So, in my department, I think there's new people right now working at City Hall. Calm down, buddy. So, it's Marisol and Noreen and then Terry's still doing building inspections. Terry's looking at options for actually doing inspections by camera, similar to what the City of Portland and City of Gresham are doing right now with Skype. I don't think he's quite gotten there yet, but I believe it's gonna be in the next week or so. And then David's been tremendous going around to all businesses and getting updates on their open hours and if they're, you know, how many of them are doing takeout. I think I was even suggesting to him to see which ones are actually doing like drawl or fills and different things like that, because I know a lot of people are looking to still get their craft beer and other options that you can get at breweries and at tap houses still. So, my staff's still working, as all of you probably know at this point, that Department of Justice has stated that land use regulations will continue for the time being. So, we're still under the 30-day, 120-day, 180-day requirements that are in the state of Oregon. So, we still have to process land use applications just as if the pandemic was not occurring, which hasn't been a problem yet, but I am a little bit fearful that it could become a problem if we get a lot of applications at once. However, that might not become much of an issue with what's happening with the economy. So, at the end of the day, it might not be an issue at all, but right now, we do have to keep with our same regulations. Sorry with the kids, they're just wound up from being in the house all week.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Thanks, Kelly. We are all adjusting to this new reality of working from home and balancing childcare and I'm sure, you know, again, thanks staff for doing this, especially during dinnertime and all that. So, you might hear things in the background from me too, so I got a couple of little.
I did want, I do want to add one more thing now that I'm thinking of it. For Noreen and Terry and Marisol and myself, because I'm actually reviewing permits in the office still too, I did want to let everybody know we're taking some precautions. So, when we get anything in, it actually sits in different piles in one of the offices that's not being used for at least four days in hopes that if there is something on it that it doesn't get spread to different people in the office that are doing the review. So, just trying to take some precautions that if somebody does have coronavirus or COVID-19 and it's on the permit application or the plan set, that hopefully if it sits there for four days, when we then have different reviewers looking at it, it won't spread through the office.
Do we have any direction yet on what the governor's office or the state DOJ is gonna do on the clock for the planning, some of these planning applications? I know Mayor Dan Holliday on the call I was on last night from Oregon City, he was pretty aggressive with the governor on the call about needing to get some direction on that. Has anything come out yet?
I've reached out to the Development Services Director at DLCD, I think, three times now. He keeps reaching back out to the DOJ and the governor's office. He told me there's at least 30 planning directors around the state that keep bugging him. And a lot of us, we understand the importance of allowing business to keep processing and try to help the economy in any way we can. We're not asking for the clocks to be totally suspended, we're just hoping to add 30 or 60 days to them. And my suggestion to a bunch of my colleagues, a bunch of planning directors and DLCD, is that if you do get before the legislature or the governor, what my advice would be is only to even tell the clocks on type three and type four applications that have to go to a hearing body. The type one and type two could, you know, if they're not going to a hear body, we can just do them over the phone and by Skype or by Zoom like we're doing today. So, I'm really hoping that they take another look at that and at least extend it by 30 to 60 days for type three and type four. Yeah, that's my hope, but I haven't heard.
Kelly, would you mind shooting an email to that effect to me? I've been on several calls with the governor's staff, I'd love to be able to bring that up.
Sure, sure thing. I'll do it tomorrow.
Thank you. Tanya, are you on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
Great.
Okay, so, as far as the community center, prior to our closing, we were able to do some deep cleaning of our facilities, which included the buses and the vehicle that we have, as well as the kitchen, the dining room, all the tables. And then I was able to utilize the building monitors before we fully closed to consistently through the night wipe down all the doorknobs, the handrails, the light switches and those kinds of things. So, we kind of, I feel like we gotta jump on that before we even close. Since our closure, all our recreation programs have been canceled, including any kind of organizations, nonprofits and such that rent the buildings, private rentals, they've all been canceled. And then, a lot of the staff has been spent time then looking at refunds and credits and so forth for all of our recreation programs and including our senior recreational trips as well. And our essential services are including, you know, our Meals on Wheels. We've been utilizing the community services staff as well as, thanks to the library and to transit who've stepped up to help us with at least one driver each this week. And last, Sarah, thanks again. And we're able to currently keep continuing our same delivery schedule of hot meals, which is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the delivery of frozen's, which we deliver on Tuesday for Thursday and Friday for the weekend. And we've given our drivers some basic instructions about maintaining social distancing, using barriers, you know, to communicate with the Meals on Wheels recipients. We've also given them some basic PPEs. As Andy mentioned, we're short with supplies. We have some basic gloves, hand sanitizer, but we do not have any face masks at this point. But we're able to give them at least some supplies when they go out, as well as wipes. And we'll continue to do this as long as we can. And we do have a stock of 300, sorry, frozen meals right now. We're able to utilize all our freezers in addition to the freezer we got for the longest day parkway. And then we also have a backstock of 300 shelf-stable meals just in case, you know, for the long run. So, we're kind of keeping that on the back end. As well as the county, they are also stocking up for, you know, all of the community centers and senior centers so that they have a stock going forward. In addition to that, we are making reassurance calls and well-care calls to the seniors. When we're checking in on the Meals on Wheels clients, we're asking about family close by and whether they have any basic needs, water, food and such. And so far, everybody has been pretty well taken care of. I would imagine as this continues though, that that might change. And we are utilizing Sandy Helping Hands and their volunteer list. And so, as things evolve, we might be able to then act as kind of somebody that can coordinate with the volunteers in the community and a senior that might be a need. There has been small shopping things, but again, everyone so far seems pretty well taken care of. I know that other agencies like Ant Farm are making phone calls as well. So, I think a lot of people are out there calling on our community seniors, which is great. And we are staffing the community center with, as I mentioned, some, a couple people to help with Meals on Wheels, heating up the meals, getting them prepared, getting them out the door, and then also being available to answer the phone to assist with information and also resources. Weekly, I meet, well, it was twice last week and twice the week before with all the Clackamas County senior centers. So, we have a conference call and we talk about, you know, just kind of the, all the home-delivered meals of frozen meals, what the senior centers are doing as far as transportation. And by the way, we stopped transportation right away on last Monday, I believe. So, we are not doing any kind of transportation whatsoever as far as pickups, drop-offs. They are still utilizing transportation-reaching people, I believe. And Andy, if I'm right, they're still doing some medical transportation, but as far as just transportation locally, we are not doing any of that. And then, we did do a blood drive last week and it was highly successful. We had a lot of participants and the Red Cross was very happy with that. They said that the community came out in full force and that there is, as you've heard, I'm sure that there is a blood shortage. So, they reached out to me again to ask if we would be open to doing another one. So, we are doing a blood drive this Wednesday, the 25th, from 1:00 to 6:00. They're utilizing the upstairs, so we're kind of just keeping them isolated from the rest of the community center. And they are practicing their social distancing and so forth up there. We also made the decision to close the community center until April 29th. And that is really to be consistent with the school closures as well as that's what a lot of the other community centers, senior centers are doing as well. There you go.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Great. Okay.
My only thing, Tanya, would be, I know, I have a question for everybody. My only thing is, is I'm on the board for the Sandy Community Action Center and part of our discussion was, is right now, they're doing the pickup, drop-off, but maybe synchronizing in with some of your guys' efforts for the door-to-door deliveries over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, is there someone I can, just maybe the director, get in touch?
Yeah, Kirsten, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, we've had a couple other local agencies and nonprofits reach out about lending assistance and so we've channeled those to the county in terms of available resources. And then also, I think Newby Ant Farm has been contacting counselors and staff too about what they're prepared to offer and helping seniors and helping citizens in need here in town. So, and there's others too, but we do greatly appreciate that. This community has really come together during this time. Sarah, update on the library?
Yes, so, we closed last Monday to the public, as you all know. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. And we've been slowly releasing staff to work from home. Today, we only had four people working in the library. Starting tomorrow, we will only have two people at the Sandy Library. Hoodland staff has been coming into Sandy since the middle of last week. They ran out of things to do up in Hoodland, so they've been in Sandy helping us kind of get everything in order. So, those two people who will be in the building will maintain phone service Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 6:00, Friday and Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00 and Sunday from 12:00 to 5:00. They'll also accept deliveries and check-in returns, as well as doing things like inventory and things that we generally put off for a long time, now we can get done. The county libraries finally released e-card registration. We were supposed to release it at the beginning of May, but we pushed it up with the pandemic. So, that came out last Monday as well, the e-card registration. So, people can register for library cards online and immediately use all of our digital resources, including ebooks and the audiobooks. Thea has been working on an online book discussion on Facebook, which earlier today, she said already had 36 people join it. So, there's obviously a need out there for social interaction around books, so that's great. It's a great way to test it out for future programming as well. So, we're looking at ways to engage people digitally. April is National Poetry Month, we generally have a poetry slam. I've already announced to the public that we've canceled all of our April programs. So, we're looking at some online form of the poetry slam that we might be able to do. So, we're looking at doing more programming online and giving people the opportunity to engage. We've interfaced with the school district and given them all of our resources for kids for while they're at home so that they have those available to their, their people. Thea is working on a weekly newsletter with all of the, there are lots of resources that have ultimately dropped their paychecks during this time that we can advertise to our citizens. So, we're gonna be doing a weekly newsletter with some of those in them, as well as regular library resources. So, we've already canceled our programs through the month of April. I haven't announced to the public that will be closed for the month of April. I do think it's likely that we will announce that very soon. If we do, we are considering doing a ClickList-like service for pickup of holds. The holds would be only from things that are currently on the hold shelf or items that are in the Sandy Library because the county is not doing a courier service currently. But that would give people some opportunities to have reading material or entertainment to watch and things like that. And we're still trying to work that out. And I'm not sure if I'm, it's, I'm not sure if it's a good idea with the current governor's statement or future possible statements that the governor may make. So, but we are considering that service.
Sarah, this is Jeremy. And I want to say that that was the number one question I've probably been getting from citizens around, including my wife, who wants to know like, hey, we can go pick up stuff for restaurants. Can we pick up our holes and books on holes and put things on there? Because my kids have read all the books they've had twice and need additional materials to read. So I said, well, I'll ask through this if that would be possible in the future. It sounds like the county is not transporting, but I guess I would ask, maybe we can ask them if they were going to start that again for that as a, kind of like the restaurants are doing or growlers or things like that where very, you know, little contact whatsoever with people.
Right. So that curbside, it would probably be curbside service that we're considering and it would probably be for about two hours a day. So that was my initial thinking.
You might get a very long line.
Yeah. We may.
No, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Sarah, you said that you guys are accepting returns?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And I assume there's some precautions being taken with stuff that you're bringing into the library.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we've just been having staff wash their hands rather than we, we set the books aside. And we're going to start setting them aside for seventy two hours based on what we're hearing about the possibility for how long the virus can live on surfaces. So.
Okay. Sounds good.
Then what are we doing for book finds too? And people aren't getting them in on time or, you know, aren't being processed in time or whatever for returns?
Right. So we've currently extended all due dates through April thirtieth, and I have a feeling we'll have to extend them further. And then anything that we're checking in, just to make sure, we're checking them in fine free. So there aren't any, going to be any fines for this time period. And if you see anything unusual on your card, let us know. We'll take care of it. But there, there have been a few hiccups that we've noticed, but I think almost all the due dates have now been extended through April thirtieth. So nothing is currently due. And we are encouraging people to keep all of the items they do have checked out, not return them, but you can return them to Sandy. A lot of the libraries are not taking returns currently.
Thanks, Sarah. Speaking of fines, Tyler, do you want to go ahead and give an update on what we're doing in for court and utility building and finance?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as, as everyone else, we are close to the public. As many people are working from home as possible. Those that are in the office are working a staggered and alternate work schedule. So there's no, there's not two employees at the front desk. Myself and Angie are attempting to work from home as much as possible, although right now is payroll week. So she is in the office to make sure that all of our employees are going to be paid on time. Court was scheduled for today and another court session for April thirteenth. Both of those have been canceled. We're working on getting all defendants rescheduled to either a May eighth or June eleventh court date. We're going to have some very heavy and large court dates coming up, but we think that it's the, the right and cautious thing to do to cancel through April thirteenth at this point in time. We do expect to continue to get phone calls about utility services or court questions. We're monitoring our voicemails and returning calls within twenty four hours, but there is, you know, more of a delay than typical. Usually we're pretty much, you know, within an hour, you're getting a call back. And that's just not the case right now with a reduced staff in the office and some of the limited capabilities that we have from home. There is a lot that we can do from home, but there's still a handful of items that, you know, need a physical body in the building to be as efficient as possible. So we're just asking that everyone be patient and give us up to twenty four hours to answer questions and return phone calls. With that said, if there's a voicemail, you know, or a question about a water leak or anything like that, we're making sure that Public Works is filled in immediately so we can address those sort of major issues. But if it's just a, you know, a, not a time sensitive thing, then we're taking that full twenty four hours to get back in touch. Payments can still be made online for both court and utilities. Utility payments can be made via the phone and then the Dropbox, as Jordan mentioned earlier, is still up and running at City Hall. So we don't anticipate really any impact to receiving payments for the services other than, you know, financial issues that various citizens may be having at this time. As Mike mentioned, we have canceled or suspended all shut offs for the time being. I did check while Mike was getting his report. We currently have seventy eight customers that were scheduled to be shut off. It's higher than normal. Typically, we expect to see around forty to fifty the night before and then about fifty percent of those pay throughout this evening and we shut off the following day. So definitely higher than normal, but not alarmingly so at this point in time. We do have some internal concerns about, you know, how large some people's bills will get over the next couple of months if, you know, more layoffs continue to happen and people aren't making those timely payments. So we still plan on moving, you know, ahead with regular billing and regular due dates. And we're requesting customers reach out and, you know, ask for a payment plan or any sort of financial assistance, keeping us in contact so we can try to be as flexible as possible. But we also, you know, need some of those utility revenues for future utility projects like wastewater and water treatment. So that's important that, you know, citizens just continue to work with us and we'll continue to work with them. We are going to be putting out a statement tomorrow for all auto pay customers. If you have a utility account that's set up with auto pay and would like to cancel that for the time being, we need to have that cancellation request in no later than the end of the day on April first. So that's going out on the back of the Waterville newsletter. We'll get a Facebook post up tomorrow about that as well. You know, we're fully aware that people are going to need some extra time, but we also still need to, again, move forward as, as usual for those customers that can continue to pay right now. And then getting close to the end of my list, thank you for your patience. All departments have been instructed to begin coding invoices and hours worked with a COVID nineteen details so we can start tracking really what the impact to our organization is, whether that's extra hours worked, overtime worked, or just the additional supplies that have been purchased or need to be purchased going forward. So, you know, council can expect an update on sort of where we're at as we move forward in this pandemic. And then that'll also just help with any sort of reimbursements that we may be eligible to receive at a later date.
So Tyler, on that, I, I keep getting emails asking me to contact our federal delegation, especially in the Senate, who's negotiating this package. Is there any way to estimate what our losses would be or what we think would be over the course of like a thirty day increment?
I mean, I can make some wild projections, but I don't have anything in front of me to help build off of at this point in time. I might have a better idea by the end of this week, what the personnel impact is, just given that we've been dealing with this for about a week and one week of the current pay period, so I can kind of extrapolate that out. We just did accounts payable last week and there was nothing coded to COVID nineteen that I recall seeing in that packet. So I don't have a good indication on supply costs at this point in time. But it's definitely something that we can continue to monitor and get you information as it comes in.
At this pace, it might take a month for them to just get it out of the United States Senate.
Yeah, that's entirely possible. So, yeah, later this week, I can definitely shoot you a number for personnel projections. But the other expenses are going to take a little bit more time just because we don't have anything yet. Let's see, I think lastly, what I'd like to mention is that, you know, Angie and myself have spent a lot of time with the help of Jordan as well, pushing out, you know, a new COVID nineteen temporary administrative policy, just on how we're dealing with that. That policy will, as you can imagine, need to be updated probably more than once during this process. We're reviewing the new federal and state mandates that expanded or added protection to different employee groups that goes into effect on April second. So we'll be looking to see how that contradicts or complements the current policy and making amendments as needed. So we'll keep council, you know, informed of those changes. But we're also just trying to remain as informed as possible and mitigate the questions that employees are wanting to ask before they ask them. So that's just taking a, a quite a bit of time off of Angie's plate and my plate, just making sure that we can get these things out to our staff. So if any staff are watching right now, we appreciate your patience as we continue to draft policies and, and stay up to date on sort of what we need to do and how we need to do it. And with that, I believe I've covered all my notes.
One more thing, Tyler, I, I'm in insurance, but I don't necessarily, I don't, two municipalities. Business interruption insurance, have we had any, is there business interruption or some kind of interruption insurance for municipalities? And have we gotten anything from CIS about a claim?
We have purchased, we don't have any insurance policy that covers interruption in service. I haven't seen a policy like that offered to us. I don't recall, you know, seeing that in our last insurance renewal. You know, fortunately for us, on a larger scale, property checks revenue is still going to come in. State shared revenues like liquor tax and cigarette tax is still going to come in. Potentially we'll see an increase in those taxes if we head towards a recession or, you know, negative economic times. It seems like some of those vices take up during those periods. So, you know, from a, from a general fund standpoint, we're going to be okay in the short term. Enterprise funds, you know, water, sewer, stormwater, we're still going to be billing for those services. So we're going to be okay there, I think, where we'll see some, not will, not Macy, but definitely we'll see some impacts are, you know, recreation with a month or two of not providing services, a decrease in the senior services department because we're not having, you know, activities and trips. As Sarah mentioned, they're not charging fees really at this time. So the library will see a little bit of a hit in their revenue. But again, for them, fortunately, the district funding has already come in for this year. So, you know, we're, we're going to be okay in the short term. But it's definitely something that we'll keep an eye on as far as what departments have lost revenue. Depending on, you know, how long this lasts, Kelly's departments with building and planning might see a slowdown in permit fees or applications to monitor that and see how, how long this really lasts and if we can bounce back pretty quickly.
Thanks, Tyler. I mean, other things to add to that, I mean, we, yeah, the, the cancellation of programs, you know, we'll see program revenue drop. I mean, I'm sure you've seen the articles about PERS, you know, and the losses there. So, you know, we're looking at future bienniums having structural impacts to the budget for all, you know, local governments. Orion has, you know, this unique system of being so dependent upon, you know, income and property taxes for localities. You know, property taxes are relatively stable. Let's see other types of funding and then the impacts on the cost side with our PERS that will continue to go up. At the state level, income taxes will lag behind in future years. So, you know, we just have to hope we get through this as soon as possible and economy comes bouncing back. So you have all of us at your disposal. If any of the counselors have questions about, you know, what's going on, any, anything that we did not cover that you'd like to hear more about, just kind of open it up to the floor if you have any, any questions. All right. Thank you. Yeah. And thanks again for staff for doing this, both from trying out the technology, but also I thought this was really helpful and will help for me to have you speak directly about what's going on in your departments and your services. So hopefully council, you saw the benefit in that. And I would like to say, hey, we should do this again sometime, but.
I think we will be.
Yeah, chances are we'd probably be giving you an update, but thanks again for the time. I know we have a couple of topics to talk about, particularly the closure of parks and also looking at the potential for setting up a small business emergency grant programs. Mayor, did you want to start those conversations?
Yeah, so let's just kind of jump into parks. One is I wanted to point everybody to an email that I sent out just as this was getting going. It's from Counselor Carl Exner, where he brings up, you know, basically he'd like to see us still allowing our trails and stuff for people to be able to access, to get out of the house and walk as long as, of course, we have signage for social distancing. I'm not opposed to that. Where I kind of really want to add this on, and it's on the heels of kind of Governor Brown's announcement, you know, she's closing all state parks as well. And, and I know that Counselor Schultz and I had a conversation about it over the weekend, which is, the sun came out in Oregon over the last couple of days. And, you know, I'm a lifelong Oregonian, I get it, spring's here. So we like to get out and play when the sun peeks through the clouds. But anybody that drove around our parks system or jogged around it or anything this, this last couple of days probably saw firsthand a lot of our neighbors and children now utilizing the equipment, not practicing social distancing, but probably beyond that, using playground equipment that we just don't have the city resources to keep sanitized and clean. Obviously, in times like the, these, our police department, they're busy, right? They've got a lot going on. The last thing we need is for them camping out at our local parks to chase off parents and children from playing. That's not what I'm suggesting. But I do think that we might need to at least have a conversation about showing the leadership to officially close the, the playground equipment on the parks post signage and, and then talk about our, that we are going to increase patrols with our police department. Now, obviously patrols, how often they're going by their, you know, let the chief kind of address. I'm not looking for really aggressive patrols here. I think the most important part is a presence and us communicating that there is going to be a presence. But really, and I think the weather's going to fix a lot of this, but we are, we don't know how long this is going to go on. Could go on a month, could go on two months. We're getting closer to the spring and summer months where the sun's going to be out more. So just wanted to have this conversation about whether or not we should, you know, let's talk about parks or park system. But so you all know, where my big, where my level, I guess my nerves and anxiety is with the playground equipment.
Oh, just to speak on that, Stan, we all got an email and Jordan would have too, fifteen minutes ago from our lawyers saying that the, all playgrounds must be closed. Skate parks, outdoor courts, playground equipment areas must be closed immediately. So signage needs to be pushed up. So I just got that email fifteen minutes ago.
And that was something I was unclear on. I saw parks listed, I know they are, and I saw state parks listed and the governor's, what she did. I, I just didn't, I did, I don't have a good understanding as to how that impacts city parks. Sounds like we've got some clarification. Do you, do you know Chief Roberts?
Yeah, they, so I, as I said, I was going through that this morning and it does list, the directive does list the, the playgrounds that have the playground equipment. And so an example, a perfect example, most of our, most of our city parks here do have a portion of the park where there's playground equipment, whether it be swing sets, climbing, things for the kids to climb on.
For tots.
Pardon?
Tot parks for tots, little kids.
Yes, okay, yes. So those portions that, from what I read through this morning, those portions will need to be closed. So those, being that we have those, that equipment in most of the city, most of the parks in our neighborhoods, it would be really difficult just to close that portion. I, I do think that it would be much easier to, however, I feel it's unfortunate. But I, I think it would be much easier to close the park itself. Most of these parks are rather small and the playground equipment takes up a pretty big portion of some of these parks. With that said, Mayor, I do, I do believe that like the Tickle Creek Trail could be utilized with signs for social distancing. I think that's a great idea for people to still be able to get out to do that. But I do believe the parks should be closed. And as far as monitoring that, my officers are out, of course. There's been some changes, like I had said, for, for a lot of the calls, if we can, were taken by phone and people have been really good, our citizens have been really great about understanding the need for that and that it's for their protection. So it's a little bit different for folks because in this community, we do have that luxury. A lot of our officers are able to go meet with people who have, want to make reports. But that's going to change for the time being and they've been really understanding. So I do think that it will not be a big problem for the police department to monitor that. If we, if we, if the council does choose to make this decision. to make this decision, I think we can handle that.
I'll just add, the, the order does say that she orders the immediate closure of all pools, skate parks, outdoor sports courts and playground equipment areas for public recreation areas that are permitted to remain open or subject to, that are not subject to this executive order. Signs requiring social distancing must be posted. So that tells me that, you know, we need to close our skate park, our playgrounds, et cetera. And then if we do decide to keep Sandy River Trail and Tickle Creek open, that we need to post signage about, hey, keep your distance between others when you're, you're recreating here. Now, there's a couple of things that we can do to do closures. I think my park, we can actually close the parking area. And there's a couple of other parks that have gates that we can, we can shut and lock. So, but I think it's only a handful out of the 18 parks that we have that we actually have those kind of measures besides just using signage.
Can I also jump in here? Two questions. The community garden and the dog park are two things that I would like to get clarification on.
Dog parks weren't explicitly named, but
I was seeing a long conversation over the weekend on social.
Yeah, I, I think, given the way that dog parks are used as, you know, dog owners kind of socialize, they congregate. I mean, I have, actually in a few days, I haven't read the science about can it be passed among canines, but so social distancing among dogs. But I think given the way the dog parks are used, and especially in this community, especially on nice days, that I would suggest we close those as well, or close that one as well.
I would agree with that, Jordan.
I'm also curious about the community gardens. That's a question I've received. You know, people are kind of all prepared to go out and plant those. So I didn't see anything specific about that sort of thing in the directives. I don't know if anybody has an opinion on this.
Do social distancing in community gardens, just like another park, right? Not all there at one time and you're more than six feet away. People are going to want to grow things, especially in this economy as things go on. A lot of people out in their yards have been planting, but in the area where the community garden is, they don't have yards. And they depend on some of that. And it gets them out in the sun too. So I think, you know, the social distancing is an easier thing to do. And I think people will respect that there.
Hey, this is Andy, and if you don't mind, I'd like to jump in here because I, I believe that the mayor was asking this in his question to me earlier and I didn't fully answer it. Is it okay if I jump in?
Please do.
Thank you. So I think part of your question was exactly this about transit and the possible spread of contagion as we carry people from place to place. And I, I do want to address that we're doing. We, we are messaging to keep social distance. We also on buses that, so most of our buses, almost all of them that have wheelchair securement areas have seats that fold down over the wheelchair securement area and they're all directly behind the driver. Those seats have all been raised with a sign that says, please keep these raised for wheelchair securement and also for social distancing to keep that barrier from our drivers. The buses that are large on the Sam Gresham route have two doors, a front door and a back door. Typically you board in the front door and, and deboard on the back door. But we are for social distancing, beginning to board through the back door and deboard through the back door, again, to, to keep that barrier from our drivers. And finally, due to ridership at the time, we are not needing to enforce a nine passenger rule, but we could enforce one if that were to become an issue. I have read online that they do ask in a 35 to 40 foot bus that you keep the 10 person rule. And that's the buses we run Sam Gresham. Thanks for letting me come back to that question.
Absolutely. And so what's, are we heading towards a consensus on the community garden issue at all?
I, I agree with, with Counselor Pete's old, I think it's really important that we keep that open. I'd like to see some signage there, obviously, that just reminds people to stay socially distant. But I, I think taking that away. You know, depending on how this goes, you know, in this economic climate that we've now entered, I, I think that could create a potential hardship for a lot of people. And I'd hate to see them lose that capability.
Can I just bring up one more point? Remember that you have equipment there, hoses, gates, things like that, that people are constantly touching the surfaces as well. And just wanted to bring that up because we won't have the capacity to sanitize that and so forth.
Make it to where they bring their own tools or put signage up?
Has tools, but we could, you know, lock that, get a different lock for it.
Can I ask a question if you don't mind?
I've been asked by a few people if like picnic tables and shelters within like Mining Park and Burnstone Park and other parks would be left open. It seems kind of problematic to leave picnic tables open, but I just wanted to throw that out there. That's all.
That's why I'm kind of like, this is closed.
Yeah. I, I agree. I mean, especially if the, the weather, again, you know, starts to get nicer and stuff. We don't want people picnicking and, you know, congregating there. Even, you know, if there's families and stuff, it's hard for us to tell whether you're a family unit versus if you're socializing with others or something, if you're in a group. And again, like the use of public spaces where, you know, this virus can live on surfaces for a certain amount of time. I think it's, it's best just to put signage that the park itself is closed instead of trying to confuse people with this portion isn't, this portion is, you know, what, you know, wash your hands after using this, but not that. I think we should just, yeah, stick with the consistent message.
Okay, so I, so I'm hearing, close the parks, allow some of these walking tra, access to the trails with proper signage. Proper signage everywhere. Close the dog park as part of this. I, I'm still not feeling a, a strong consensus on the community garden. I, I hear us wanting to keep it open. But I've also, I've heard some concerns with the equipment and the social distancing. What's our thoughts? Are we thinking, keep the community garden open with proper signage, that community distancing, maybe bring in your own tools and equipment? What are we thinking?
Are there watering hoses there? Yeah.
There are two hoses there that we provide for them.
Okay, so everybody's going to use the same hose.
Right.
Probably a good reason to shut it down.
Yeah, that's not consistent programming. If we let that, that consist, like, keep using the same tools for that, but then say, we can't let kids play on the playground because they're touching the same stuff. I don't know.
Jeremy?
Yeah, you know, I feel bad for the people there because I think when you're gardening, you can be social distancing yourself, but that's my opinion. I can't get my own kids to come help me, so they have social distance from me, so. So anyway, but in that area, I do, I do worry about the big grass parks though. You know, we went to the school district and played tennis, my family, just my family. And we social distanced ourselves from four courts away from another people. And when someone came up, we left because we had done our time there. But I looked out over there and everyone was social distancing themselves. It was kind of funny in some of their activities because of the social distancing and they weren't playing soccer, they weren't playing frisbee, they weren't playing those things. The school district did send out an email saying, hey, come, you know, don't use the playground structure, but you know, social distance yourself, you know, in their fields and those type of things, which kind of surprised me because they're always trying to keep us off their, their property. So, you know, that's not consistent messaging between those two as well. I think the signage is what they said. So fields, the walking trails, I'd be more concerned about closing those down than anything. Because I saw people walking down my street. I live on a busy street here, you know, and the walkers and the groups of people aren't social distancing themselves there. But I did see it at the parks, at the church on, down the street here, the Catholic church, you know, people playing there, social distancing themselves. So anyways, that's my opinion. I think people are going to go outside and get exercise anyways. And just be out there, maybe not this next week because of the rain, but after that, so.
Can I just?
Maybe we look at it in a week as, as well, at our next meeting too, because this will be a different story. It changes every four hours.
That's what I was just going to say. And Sarah has been communication with Julie at the school district. And I believe they are going the same direction that they're going to close all of their campuses as well and parks.
Yeah, I just got that email.
So their email two, a day ago or two days ago was a little bit different. It, it changes every four hours and I think the rain will keep people away. I think the gazebo in Mining Park and some of those things, I think we could post saying, hey, this is closed, you know, because that's a place to congregate easily.
Jordan, do you feel like we need to take a vote on this? Or do you feel like you have pretty strong direction?
One more comment?
Yeah.
So, you know, as far as the community gardens go, I, I mean, I, my thing is, is this goes on, people are really going to need some places to, to do some things. And I feel like, you know, let's get the hose out of there, let's get the tool out of there. At some point, you have to allow people to make decisions for themselves. And I feel like if we, if we get some proper signage out there, let's allow people to be responsible. I just, I really don't feel that the role of government is to police to over enforce or over police people. You know, if this goes till the end of April, the end of May, the end of June, the environment that we're living in today is going to be very different. So, I, I'm not in favor of closing the community garden whatsoever.
One thing to add about the community garden is, this is the time you plant. And then you let it sit there and, you know, the rain comes and waters it for the next month. But if you don't plant now, you're not going to get anything in, in May and June and July and August, when things may settle down, reopen again. So it's kind of, this is the time. And you don't need the tools as much. You don't need the watering as far as the hoses.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you want to do it right now. Look out your window, but.
Yeah, it's loud back there.
I hear what you're saying. So, Tanya, how, how hard would it be just to get out there and remove the, the, the equipment? And to keep it open without equipment?
I mean, we, you have to remember, like, right now, it's not a problem, but when do we bring those hoses back? Because when the, Mike can speak to this, but when the water is shut down, people are complaining because they have no water then to plant. So depending on how that goes, but it won't be a problem taking the hoses out. We can put a new lock on the shed, put all the hoses and all the equipment in there. That would be fine.
I'm wondering about just doing messaging that says, basically, we will have the dirt still there if you want to use it with proper social distancing. You'll have to bring all your own stuff for it. When we reopen parks, we'll reopen the hose, but we don't know when that will be, so.
Yeah. And I think we can revisit it, right? To everybody's point, this moves quickly. I mean, obviously if things start kind of going back to normal, I don't know any counselor that wants to stand in the way of keeping parks closed. So, I mean, definitely something that we can continue to discuss.
Public gardens too, people sign up for that space. So we have direct contact and we can communicate. There's also public shaming, you know, people will police themselves. And I've seen it out there and some people get pretty irate. Others, not so much, but so there's that piece too, so.
All right. So I'm going to reiterate what I'm hearing then. So I'm hearing, close to public, uh, close most of the public parks, including the dog park, playground parks, pocket parks, all those. Keep the trail system open with proper signage, signage everywhere, of course. And then keep the community gardens open, except we're going to remove the equipment and properly communicate that situation. So that we're wrapped? Okay, do we want it, do we need a motion and vote on that, Jordan? Or are we pretty comfortable just doing it as far as process goes?
Oh, we could do it. I, I was sort of thinking it'd be a nice trial run to see how voting works on this platform.
Yeah, let's do it. I'll vote. I don't mind voting. Jeff?
Something we were prepared for, Jordan, sorry.
I don't see a button for that.
You can do a voice vote if you like.
Yeah, I guess we would have to do votes, voice votes, a roll calls.
You can do all in favor, all, you know, nays.
Give me a motion, give me a motion, give me a second.
I make a motion as what the mayor had stated just now.
Does anyone want a second? Thank you. There's a motion by Counselor Pete's old, a second by Counselor Smallwood. Jeff, will you do a roll call, please?
Counselor Pete's old?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood? Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yes. All right. Thank you. I gotta pull up the right window with the agenda here. Okay. Oh, economic relief fund. So there's been some conversations offline. The city of Hillsborough, City of Gresham, like Beaverton has also made this move along with a couple of others. Came up on a call, excuse me, at the League of Oregon Cities, but on, I think Jordan and I were both on. Where Steve, Mayor Steve Coway from Hillsborough talked about it. Basically, we've talked about a little bit tonight. You know, Hillsborough, Gresham, Beaverton, big budget, Sandy, not very big budget, right? So obviously we're not, our hands are a little bit tied as far as how overreaching we can go. That said, one thing that Mayor Coway brought up that they were doing in Hillsborough that I asked Jordan, our staff to do is obviously there's, you know, like mountain, we don't know what mountain festival is going to look like. There's events, Easter egg hunts, there's different library programming, community services, maybe looking at some budgetary items that we had allocated funds for that in all reality didn't end up actually happening to see if we could free up some money. I've been working back and forth with David Snyder and Jordan to send them and Kelly as well. And they've been doing a lot of research. It looks like Gresham has done a program like $10,000 to $5,000 grant increments. Everybody seems to have shored up between $500 and $400,000. But if you consider this population and the sheer amount of businesses in those community compared to ours, we certainly don't need to do that much. But, you know, I was hoping to maybe free up between $15,000 and $100,000 or something. Try to do, you know, 10,000 increments along those lines, follow what other communities have done. But just, I mean, something, right? If you think about our main street right now, movie theaters, restaurants, shops, I mean, it's, you know, I've gone around and done some of these promotional videos and, you know, I've really enjoyed them, or aspects of them. The, the horrible parts going in and picking up the item and talking to the owner, the business owner. It's, it's it's not easy out there right now, right? So there's people struggling and I, I'd just like to see our community do our part. Or at least try with a little bit of means that we have to put something together to do for some of these people. So I don't know what some of the different thoughts from counselors is on pursuing this kind of an opportunity.
Just wanted to share that today, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Today, the Joint Legislative Committee on the Coronavirus Response met. And they're putting together a plan to have a special session to promote, and that will have business credits and also immediate funds for a number of businesses. So it would be good to see how that process plays out this week. They have a couple more meetings coming up. And some proposed funding for businesses, small businesses.
George, we've had some conversations. I know the money's tight. We could realistically put together.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to do it honestly is, and to do it quickly would be to reallocate or use general fund contingency, but also answer. or use a general fund contingency, but also answer the question of how much or can we use urban renewal for a program like this? Um, sort of protect the general fund a little bit more. Um, and I think there there's already, um, I don't know if those Gresham or Hillsborough, and some city used some urban renewal as as a funding source, so that's an option. Um, like the mayor said, I I think it takes a little bit of analysis, uh, on the budget side to to figure out what is it being impacted in terms of, uh, you know, our programs and services and what the, you know, costs, um, are for those programs and also what kind of loss of revenue to to offset those costs. Um, but, you know, to do it quickly, we can easily, you know, use contingency funds and reallocate those, um, and then urban renewal too. Uh, and then sort of, um, you know, work out the details on how to maybe replenish that, um, as we move throughout the the rest of the fiscal year. Um, so we do, we do have some options. If you want us to explore those.
One concern I have, um, is we are one, we're we're in week one. In in reality, of some of this shutdown stuff and, uh, you know, and I think week two, week six, uh, week five, whatever, you know, it's going to get even even harder. Uh, so coming up with some ideas is is great. I think, uh, as we can flush some of these other things out, like Jan said, and some other resources that we have will help help our community and help out there. I know David's working hard. It's amazing to talk to him and see what he's doing out there for our our small businesses around our town, just getting and chatting with them. Um, but I think, uh, pulling all the resources together that we can will give us a better picture of where we can help and what we can do to not duplicate what some of the resources we're going for special. I don't want to say earmark, but towards a certain type of business from what Jan was saying or from someone else that we're missing out on some of the other locally established businesses that, uh, didn't qualify or couldn't get those type of, uh, assistance that, you know, maybe we could help more, uh, that we don't even know about until week six or week three. So, if that makes any sense.
Well, I I agree with that. That's part of my points, understanding how long some of this takes for us to even put together, right? It's it's getting getting started on on putting together a a program. Uh, Tyler, it looks like you want to say something.
Oh, I would just, you know, add that, um, no matter which bucket of funds we ultimately pull money from, there is only a finite amount of money, right? So at to Counselor Pete's old's point, we're only a weekend. Um, and I don't want to be the, you know, the naggy finance guy, but you you may recall how low our contingency got last by any, um, with multiple polls for this and that. And I just want to be, you know, cognizant of the fact that that money's there for a reason, absolutely. And if if this, if if there's any reason to use it, this is a very good, um, reason to do so. But, uh, it may be prudent to wait and see what the state and and federal governments can come up with before we start, um, you know, writing checks just to make sure that we don't, uh, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot by acting too quickly and getting money to some businesses that need it now, but then what about the businesses that need it in three or four weeks? Uh, so, my two cents.
Okay, Tyler, we need a naggy finance guy. All right.
Every once in a while, it's helpful, I think.
So so what if we, uh, what if we have you guys kind of work on coming up with some areas where we can obtain some resources? Um, whether it's urban renewal or some funding, let's see what the what the state does and then and then, uh, revisit this topic. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, uh, we could work on the criteria. We've already done, you know, research on what those other cities, um, are offering for their programs. We can pull that together. And one thing maybe we can consider is, you know, sort of reduce our risk and see what the demand is, like, start off small. And then if we need to come up with more funding, um, you know, as we kind of work through, uh, what the budget may look like and we're may, we may be able to come up with other funds. Uh, we can expand that, um, but maybe that's what we do is kind of start small and see what the man really is. Um, but yeah, first step is to kind of develop, you know, do the research and develop the the program criteria, um, and do the financial analysis.
And some people are really hurting and not everybody, but not everybody is hurting, right? And so one of the things I'd like to know is, is can we take private donations and into this to help supplement it as well? Yeah, and I I love what's going on with Counselor Hamblin right now.
John, I I think that cabinet should come live with me.
It might be for sale.
What is the county doing, Jordan, or ma- Stan, maybe you know, anybody know what the county is doing for assistance or what their topic is? Because I'm sure they're having the same conversation and, you know, they're kind of the next overarching government above us before the states. Does anyone know, or are they at the same place we are?
This is Kelly. I I can tell you from talking to David, um, over the weekend, maybe Friday, is that I do know that the county um, is looking at doing some stuff with the tourism tax money that was gonna go for promoting tourism, you know, how we did the, um, we do like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in grant funding every year. That program might be suspended this year. Uh, and that money might be reallocated to small businesses, uh, CPP. Um, other than that, I can find out more from David and definitely provide Jordan, you know, David can give Jordan and I more of an update for next time.
Yeah, we'll look into it. I I haven't heard any, you know, so it's from the county yet, so, uh, it might not be something they're they're able to focus on right now.
Yeah, I haven't either.
Weekend, so everyone's probably in the same boat. I know the Senate is, Congress.
So, uh, we don't have, we have to spend all night on this. I'm seeing consensus to conduct some more research and let staff get back to us. Is that right?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay, great. Uh, moving on, contracts for engineering services. I'm guessing that this is Mike? Mike, you need to unmute.
I'm, there we go.
This is the, uh, we've had a couple of contracts and out, and they just seem to all land on this agenda, not by design, but just by, uh, happenstance. Um, we solicited proposals for the three sixty second and Bell Street Extension Project. We received one proposal from Harper Hoff Peterson Regalas. We've worked with them in the past. They've been very good to work with. They did the both phases of the Debarco Road project. And they do specialize in kind of these local street projects, so, um, uh, they've, the, um, uh, scope of work and fee is attached to the, uh, packet there. Uh, I think it's Exhibit A. And the, uh, this is complete services, um, designed through construction, including all the environmental cultural resources, survey, right of way acquisition. Cost of actually acquiring the right of way would still be outside the scope of this contract. But the consultant who would do the appraisals contacted partners that'd be part of this project. Um, it's just a little over a million dollars, a million thirty six thousand dollars. There's some contingency items in there as well, depending on the extent of any sort of, uh, contaminated soil that might be found. Uh, the extent of the wetland, um, review, uh, the extent of any cultural resources that are discovered and the extent of the ODOT coordination. So the total, uh, the portion right now is just over a million. With the contingent, it's about a million, two. We wouldn't expect to spend any, and certainly not all of the contingency money, but that's the dollar amount. Um, the other contract is something that's been going on for a while, Water Master Plan Update. Just trying to get the scope ironed out, and we have funding in the, um, water fund to complete this. Uh, the scope of service is about two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, and we had about two hundred and fifty thousand budgets for this. There's some deals in the staff report about, about this. Uh, the main thing is we're going to look at the, uh, Port Water Bureau source and whether it's cheaper to, uh, move our point of connection to their new proposed treatment plant, or it's cheaper to, uh, purchase raw water where we purchase it now and build a treatment plant and treat it. So they'll do the lifecycle cost analysis on both those options and see what the most cost effective solution is and come back with a recommended alternative. There's also a couple of other ones that, uh, have been approved administratively, and that's the, uh, contract for the, um, collection system rebuild that will take place this summer. And, uh, the owner's rep services for, uh, to help us kind of manage the overall scope of the, um, wastewater treatment plant project.
All right, great. Um, any questions for Mike or or emotions?
Motion to approve, which, where is that verbiage there?
At the very bottom.
The bottom of the first page, so sorry. I make a motion to authorize staff to enter into agreements with Murray Smith for the Water Master Plan Update and the H H P R for the Bell Street three sixty second project.
Second.
Counsel, uh, there's been a motion by Counselor Pete's old, the second by Counselor Lee. Um, Jeff, will you do a roll call? I'll vote, please.
Counselor Pete's old.
Aye.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Aye.
Counselor Lee. Counselor Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Pulliam.
Aye. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Uh, moving on, Kelly, you may want to start to unmute. Uh, we are going to three eight 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 Pioneer Boulevard. The loading zone off of Strauss Avenue for Grandma's House. Welcome.
I could, I could introduce this for you, Kelly, and you could jump in on any little details. Um, Kelly, yeah, Kelly worked on the whole harmless agreement uh, for this. And just to give the background on what's been going on here, um, I think most of the council's aware, we've been working with Grandma's, uh, house to, on a, uh, expansion and relocation of their childcare, um, business to uh, this address Pioneer on Pioneer Boulevard. It's the old Red Boot Branding, uh, building. Um, and, uh, that's been going on for a little while now. And in light of the council's, uh, goal to expand childcare services and facilities in Sandy, we've been kind of, um, doing pretty much all that we can, um, as a city to support this effort. And one of the things that, um, that we're looking at is given the constraints of this site and this building, um, on Pioneer, um, and Strauss, we thought that, uh, it seemed prudent to to agree with the tenant's request to allow a loading zone, um, uh, given that you have a highway, um, right at their front door, they're looking at having a second access or another access along the side. Um, that seems more suitable for a loading and drop off zone for children, uh, than using the state highway, which I don't think ODOT would, um, allow anyways. Um, so that's one of the the measures that we're doing in working with them. In addition, uh, we're using facade grants. Um, you know, we've been working with them and the, uh, county and state to try to see, um, how we can make this, uh, an easy, um, effort for them to expand, um, and have their, uh, uh, business relocate there. Um, so this, uh, requires council approval and authorizing, um, the the city to enter into this agreement. They have not, the other parties have not signed this yet, um, but given, uh, you know, the council goal of, uh, expanding childcare services and also given, uh, some of the changes right now with the parts given for childcare services, especially for emergency workers, that was included in the governor's, uh, executive order today. Uh, we felt like, uh, now was the time to bring this forward to council, at least to get your approval on it, um, so we can continue to move forward with this, uh, business expansion ever. Kelly, anything to add?
No, I think that was a great summary. I don't have anything at this point.
Any questions?
Uh, I just will start with saying thank you to staff. Uh, I know that Counselor Schultz and Lee, uh, particularly have been on the work with childcare. Uh, we placed it as a council goal here, uh, at our last, um, council goal setting. And seeing kind of staff going above and beyond on this project, uh, bringing urban renewal funds and different things to bear. I just, uh, I just wanted to say that, just thank you to to our staff on this project for everything you've done to make, uh, get us to this point and, uh, hopefully push us to the finish line and and, uh, I'm definitely for this, you know, it's a unique project. Um, yeah, the childcare, I mean, we're, uh, I know Bethy will tell me, right? We're a childcare desert, right? So we we got to do whatever we can to take care of this. Um, and I'm I'm definitely for it. Anybody else?
I have a question. Um, I'm for it. Uh, so my comment is not negative at all, but why is the Sandy Urban Renewal, uh, Agency um, part of the, um, parties on it? I know the city of Sandy would be the owners, but why this, uh, Urban Renewal Agency?
Part of the agreement was that they're contributing funds through the facade grant and also through putting in a landing on the east side, which is actually part of the drive, drop off and pickup. So, uh, Mr. Duvman, our attorney, just wanted to make sure that since they're contributing funds, that they're also held harmless from any damages that could potentially happen in the avenue, especially since we're contributing to assist with the loading zone essentially.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Yeah, I reiterate that I'm, um, impressed with what staff has come up with in this project, um, to make this feasible so that we can get some more daycare spots quickly in town. Um, so yeah, I like it. It seems well thought out and I'm all for it.
Great. Uh, let's get a motion then.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute the Grandma's House loading zone hold harmless agreements.
Second.
A motion from Counselor Schultz, a second from Counselor Smallwood. Uh, Jeff, will you call a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Pete's old.
Aye.
Counselor Smallwood. Counselor Hamblin.
Aye.
Counselor Lee.
Counselor Lee.
Aye.
Counselor Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Pulliam.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, report from the city manager.
Great. Um, so really short, since I feel like the first hour of this meeting was sort of a report out on what the city's been working on. Um, we have done some things to continue business. Actually, you know, let me start just again by thanking staff for, um, the last couple of weeks especially. This has been, as you can imagine, it's super stressful on the community, super stressful on our our nation and the world, but, um, you know, and staff too. And it's a, it's a balance, because I know everyone, um, you know, are dealing with the stress of home and the the fact the schools are closed and and worried about, you know, their friends and family and community members, and then also have to balance that we have a job to do. Um, and I know that's hard and I I just appreciate, you know, the time that people are putting in and the care. And again, everyone stepping up to to serve, um, Sandy, and, um, I do really appreciate it. Um, but, uh, so a couple of things, uh, this last week, this last week, I wanted to update the council. Uh, first, really quick, uh, the community survey was actually, uh, going on, uh, over the last couple of weeks. Uh, they did, uh, happen to reach three hundred people, uh, so we have our sample size secured. Uh, I think more people are at home and answering phones with the time, uh, these last couple of weeks. Um, I will get the preliminary, I haven't seen any of the numbers or results, um, but I will be getting the results, uh, preliminarily on Wednesday, and we'll be setting up probably a a video conference, uh, to go over the results with the working group. Um, I, you could probably come to your own conclusions of what, uh, the results might show, uh, when you survey during this time, uh, chalk it up to some extremely bad luck. Um, and then on, uh, another item, um, on Friday, we met with DEQ. Uh, the mayor, uh, mentioned this, uh, in in terms of the MAO, um, timeline and schedule and negotiations on that. Uh, we had our consultants a part of that meeting. Uh, we are, uh, making some changes and revisions to their draft, um, particularly in, uh, the the schedule, uh, and timelines, uh, but we are submitting those, uh, comments back on, uh, by April third. Uh, if Mike's still on, he can, he can answer or go into more detail on some of the nuance with that. Um, but I could just say the indication from DEQ, uh, the tone that they're setting is they're not up for any kind of renegotiation of extending out any further timelines in terms of the the larger project. It's more about what milestones, uh, from now until then, uh, that we can negotiate. Um, I think we're on the same page, uh, still in terms of us being able to do this and the progress, progress that we've made. Um, but, you know, the, again, there's kind of clear direction from the state that we need to continue to to be on top of this and and start implementing the the measures that are in our facilities, uh, plan for wastewater. So any questions about that?
Yes. Um, Jordan, the, I I have a feeling the economy is going to take a little bit of a hit. the, I have a feeling the economy is going to take a little bit of a hit here. I may, I may be wrong. It may bounce back right away. You know, there's future rate increases and stuff coming down the road. Depending on what the unemployment rate is, what the economy is doing, how people are doing. You know, I'm worried enough about this last rate increase that we did and knowing how much we need to do that to hit this timeline on this project. I mean, I guess I'm okay with that report right now. But we're going to have to start pushing back a little bit because to have to dramatically keep increasing rates in a bad economy. I'll tell you what, it's one thing I'm not willing to do.
Yeah, so the, the first, I'd say the answer I'd give to that is with the collection system improvements, what that will show us in terms of what we were able to do with the inflows and infiltration may help get us some breathing room in terms of when the next plant needs to come online. There's also the the unknown that we don't have from DEQ yet in terms of actual permitting for the new discharge. So, you know, that that schedule still needs to be filled in and fill in those blanks. The DEQ needs to help us with that on that end, but you know, we've already committed, you know, this first rate increase, the six million loan for the work that's going to happen starting this summer. And I think, yeah, waiting to see how those improvements changes things, both at the treatment plan and our collection system, may give us a little more, you know, support and coming back to them with the other timelines. So I hear you.
I think in a, give it a month, and a lot of these agencies, including this one, will have to come to the conclusion that some timelines and some other things will change. Just, that's the nature of what the new life will be like. And so I think it's hard, like we talked about, we're in week one and people are not ready at a point to figure out what those things will be, including DEQ, I'm hoping, you know, as well as ODOT and everybody else. But come in, you know, four weeks from now, they're, you know, they'll have figured out what they're doing for work wise, whether working from home or in the office or that type of thing. Realize that everyone's in the same boat and hopefully, as you put it, Stan, you know, they'll come to some being able to work with some of the timelines that they've been put into place. So I think we'll see, hopefully see some leniency in the next month or two.
And then, yep.
Still on, Jordan, are you still giving a report?
Just one last thing. Just, you know, I want to thank Jeff for, you know, taking on the communications effort on this COVID response and doing the website. If you guys have anything you would like us to add or any information that you think would be helpful to share with the community, please let them know. We've, you know, I'll be received input from, from the mayor and counselors about certain things to add and it's been really helpful. And, you know, again, thank you for sharing information to to your networks and getting the word out about, you know, what's going on and where to get the best information. That's helpful, helpful for us. So yeah, thanks for that. And again, yeah, let Jeff know if there's anything that we could do, you know, to communicate to our population about this.
Was very pleased with what Jeff did, Jeff and David on the website with the new links and people being able to use those sources. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Yep.
Okay, so I, we will move on to committee and council reports. I'm going to do my best to do it in the right order by memory. I always know you're first, Bethany.
Uh, yeah, before all of this happened, Jan and I held a informal meeting with some childcare providers in Sandy just to sort of get their specific concerns as we are launching this task force and looking into this childcare desert. We had two providers attend that session and got some good feedback from both of them. And in the meantime, have had conversations with Kelly and the school district and trying to kind of match the issues that we're hearing with the people that can fix them at this point is kind of our uh, goal, I guess you could say. So, um, yeah, it was good to get some more lines of communication open with people doing childcare here already and who would like to continue doing more and just kind of hashing out the barriers that they face. Um, and that is all I've got tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Counselor Lee.
Yes, we didn't have the Transit Committee meeting this month. It got canceled because of you know what. I've been very excited watching what the Legislative Committee is doing, the Joint Committee on Virus Response. They've got a list of 38 different projects they're working on and they're now going through those looking for priorities and they're supposed to be a fairly immediate special session where they'll prioritize $100 million in funding. And there are anticipated to be several special sessions with more funding becoming available. So I think there will be some resources out there to help all of us along a little bit more.
Great. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Hamblin.
All right, nothing to report. Committee wise, because they've been out, just like we've been out. But I do have something on a personal note. So I've had a lot of conversations with my family and have been thinking about the decision for running for reelection this coming November. And so after some consideration with the family and just a desire after finishing my PhD and trying to spend more time with my family, be able to coach sports, I will not be running for reelection in November. So I wanted to get the word out a little early. So as we're kind of coming up to that timeline here this summer, if you know some folks that are interested to let them know that that seat will be open. And I just want to thank everybody for the support over the years. I will serve out the rest of my term, so I won't, I'm not planning on leaving early. But just want to give council a heads up that that was my plans.
Well, now I still think it was a mistake to appoint you over me, you know, when you got it, John. But you, you've been a, an incredible asset to our, not just to our council, but councils over the years, as I've watched it. And thank you so much for your service to our community. I've really appreciated and enjoyed working together over the last few years. I, I hate thinking about counselors not running for reelection. You're all my first counsel. I just can't even imagine having a counsel that's not you guys. So I'm, that's unfortunate to hear, but thank you so much for your service and looking forward to the last couple, several months of your leadership. Thank you, John. Counselor Smallwood.
All right, so some park stuff. Depending on how this all goes out, Kathleen Walker has gone out for a $6,000 grant for John's Ridge Viewpoint to get a camera. If that goes through, we may need, we may be looking to get some matching funds to put a camera for Channel Eight News. So you would see John's Ridge Viewpoint. If you guys watch Channel Eight News in the morning, you see that they have, I believe, a camera up at Ski Bowl and they have one at OHSU. And so you may, in the near future, potentially be seeing one at the most photographed place in Oregon. So that's one thing. Sam and then Carol Cohen have been working on pickleball, pickleball courts with the school district. And of course, depending on what happens here in the future with the school campuses with the closures, the school district has been very easy, I think, for them to work with. They've talked about using the Cedar Ridge tennis courts, the old high school tennis courts. They have some leftover paint. They would be painting pickleball courts and then purchasing a lockbox there where they would keep supplies. And basically, the, the fee to play pickleball will, will pay for itself. So the city won't, won't be out any money and I'll be able to give you guys more information as that, as that moves forward. But that definitely meets a, meets a need in the community for a certain group. And they're looking at getting some grant money for some different things with that for nets and various things. So more to come on that. And then just kind of a bugging everybody's ear, I responded to Stan's email the other day, but obviously not tonight because we are in the first week of this. But as we move forward, I would like people to think about what we're going to have to do with this, these water rates and the fact that we, we may have to reevaluate where we're at with those. So just something for people to kind of stew on here in the future. And then just lastly, kind of an update, I'll give you guys kind of an update on fire response, just because you're part of the community and you might be getting some questions from people moving forward as we, as we all work through this. Like the police department, we're also having a very difficult time getting equipment, masks, gowns, face shields, gloves, believe it or not, because everybody right now is trying to get them. So we've been ordering from all over the country, trying to get stuff. We're trying to get equipment from the county, from the state, from the feds. And as we move through that, but what you may see, should we visit your neighborhood in relation to this, is you may see a very different response than what people are used to seeing. We're going to be sending one person into a house only. Not a whole group of us. And then we'll be utilizing staff as we need. If this goes too long and we start to run out of equipment, you'll see us responding to medical calls in our full SCBA, so our full fire, fire apparatus, just for our own protection and the protection of, of, of the community as well. So I'll be able to give you guys more updates as we move through this, but obviously very interesting times as we all know, and we're all just going to work through it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pete Sol.
So we had a meeting with the Economic Development Committee there. It was a different meeting for sure from the, the one before that. As, you know, this had not happened yet and it was just starting to be spoke about and businesses were starting to feel a little bit of it. And we were supposed to have another one here at the beginning of April, and that's been canceled, of course. And with those businesses that are around the table as well are having huge impacts that, that is such a drastic the polar opposite of what they were talking about before. So they will definitely change our conversations in the future when we get back to meeting on that conversation. But the conversation we had talked some about was about doing a market study. And I've already talked to David and I talked to Jordan about this. We were going to bring forward a market study to you all about and how that would get paid for, but really, that would be the wrong time to do a market study in that the market's changed in one week and will change for a few months here. And so we'll be postponing that. You can probably look forward to that sometime down the road in the future because we still need it and we'll probably even need it a lot more then as the landscape of our businesses, big and small, will have changed and what our residents need. So that kind of a sad note on that, but that's where we're at. You know, I want to speak about the culture and how it changes. Obviously, I'm in technology and this will really change. I mean, look at us now. I mean, John Hamblin's already Facebooking pictures of the screenshot of all of us doing city council on here and posting. But, you know, we will, this is how it's changing in education. This is how it's changing in everywhere else. And now Stan's doing it. But the point is, is we are living in a different world than we've ever lived in before. And yes, I won't go in detail about how great SandyNet is, but we live in an environment that will not look like it did a week ago. And being flexible and understanding that change as we go, our citizens won't either. And, you know, they need grace. We need grace in this whole factor there. Our staff is doing amazing, amazing job and thank you so much. You know, we are a small town of what, 12,000? We are not a town of 100 or several hundred thousand or even 50,000. And so what we're able to get done is huge and I do appreciate the leadership we have. And as we kind of go through this with our own families and bringing out these emergency plans, each one of us has a different story and how we're doing with our families. And so I want to thank you all. Thank everyone out there as we take our job serious, whether it's volunteer paid, it doesn't matter. We all take this really serious. And so thank you for that. I want to give a shout out to David. Been in conversation with him with small businesses around town and big businesses as we talk about the economic development aspect of things, but just where citizens are. And a lot of people just want to talk and just sit there. So when you go out there, give yourself an extra 30 minutes with someone that you might have had five minutes with and just ask them how they're doing. They'll talk. It'll mean a lot to them. I know Stan has gone out there and done some video stuff. I didn't do the video stuff because, you know, it's one of those memes where, you know, this is what you are, look like, this is what it looks like in your mind. It's two different things for me. But anyways, I do want to give a shout out, you know, some of the businesses that I was able to go and and, and my family went out and did. I think it's important that we still get out and interact. People need to see each other, not just in video conferencing, but out there for our health, our sanity, but also for our economy. And just letting our businesses know that we are supporting them. So thank you, David, if you're still online or hearing this, for all the work that he's done and coordinating it, because I know it's taken a lot of toll on him as he needs to spend a lot more time with each one of them just listening. So thank you to staff. That's all I have.
Thank you, counselor. For my report, I'm not going to keep it very long. I started off our meeting today with a lot of what I wanted to communicate and say. I am our representative with the Mountain Festival. Those folks have already contacted me. July's pretty far out. I told them I, I feel at least that decision for that event with the coronavirus is still a month, month and a half, two months away. But, you know, they're already thinking about that and what, you know, what some of the ramifications might be and what their festival might look like. So I'll keep everybody up to date on, on that. I did want to talk about the All Abilities Park. And the thing that we had going on with the Blazer, still have going on with the Blazers of Moda. And just give a shout out to Sarah Richardson in our Community Services Department. I mean, just tremendous amount of work, outstanding social media that she's been doing. She printed off flyers into jamborees and handed them out. She's just done such a terrific job. And I know that we're starting to kind of get further behind here and and it's been a great community effort. You know, we really got sidetracked like everybody did with this COVID-19 coronavirus stuff. But I did want to shout that out. And it was a great, it is a great community effort. And then on top of that, you know, our businesses, we've talked a lot tonight about how some of them are struggling on our, kind of our main street core. This is a time that here at Sandy and its neighbors, we need to be looking out for each other. We need to be not just looking out for employees that lost, might have lost their job or hurting or small business owners. Isolation is hard. And so do get off electronics, stop texting, stop emailing and pick up the phone and have a conversation. If even for no other reason, just to say hello and to check in. And use technologies like we're using tonight for face-to-face interaction, especially with members of our community that might be more isolated or might be getting up in years and, and have a lot of time alone. Really look out for fellow neighbors. I've just been so humbled by what our community has done, what our employees have done to step up the communication apparatus that Jeff and Jordan, our team, helped put together. It's been unbelievable. Talking about local businesses, pickup and delivery resources. Just everything has been great. And the final thing I say is, is very divisive time that we all live in. And it shouldn't be that way right now. We all need to be listening to our leaders, whether it be President Trump, Governor Kate Brown. You know, these are, in times like this, as people in the state and as Americans, we need to come together. They're surrounded by the best and brightest scientists in the world. And we really need to be listening to both what our leaders say as well as the experts in our field and and really just following through and doing our part. I keep hearing around the internet that other generations have been called the arms and ours have been called the couch. And, you know, the couch isn't a very bad place to be, especially in Sandy where we have SandyNet and access to Netflix, Hulu, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus and everything else. So with that, thank you again, everybody for participating tonight. This will probably be the first of several, would be my guess, that we're going to have. This is like week one. This will probably be the first of several would be my guess that we're gonna have. This is like week one, you guys, and we're talking about a month. Could be two months, could be longer. No one really has a clear thought on that. My thoughts and prayers are with our first responders. We need to start putting a lot of thought as a city and its leadership into what week four, five, six, seven, eight look like and what that looks like from a socio-dynamic perspective. And we were setting a lot of rules on parks and public spaces. I don't know how long citizens around our community, the state, the nation are gonna be wanting to follow all of our rules, especially in an independent spirit place like America. So we need to be thinking about that. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, everybody for participating with that. Guess what I made Jeff bring me today? Oh, yeah. I'll call this meeting to close. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, take care, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Good night to all the kids.
Say bye-bye.